Good evening, everybody. I'd like to invite everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, Mrs. Calanda?
Mrs. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Jacob?
Here.
Mr. Major?
Here.
Mrs. Mogulman?
Here.
Dr. Sartino?
Mrs. Feldman?
Here.
Tonight, the Board of Education is so pleased to recognize Parkway's latest National Board Certified Teachers. I'd like to ask Assistant Superintendent for Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, Dr. Lisa Meredith, to come to the podium, please.
Good evening, President Feldman, Vice President Morgan -- I can't talk to Mogulman -- members of the Board, Dr. Marty and Ms. Calanda. I am so excited to be here this evening to represent some of our finest educators. Dennis Wiley once stated, "Never become so much of an expert that you stop gaining expertise. View life as a continuous learning experience." This evening, we are honoring five outstanding educators who live that quote. In the Parkway Professional Learning and Evaluation Model, there are five domains. Under the fifth domain, Professional Responsibility, there is a standard designed to evaluate professional growth. The exemplary category descriptor reads, "actively pursues optional professional development activities and initiates activities to contribute to the profession, seeks feedback, and provides collaborative leadership." As a result of their learning, these fine teachers will help initiate and contribute to the future of our district. National Board Certification is an assessment process sponsored by the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards. Like board-certified doctors and accountants, teachers who achieve National Board Certification have met very rigorous standards through intensive study, expert evaluation, self-assessment, and peer review. As difficult as this process can be, it is widely recognized as one of the best professional development opportunities for teachers, counselors, and library media specialists, and soon for principals and teacher leaders. In a congressionally mandated study, National Board Certification was recently recognized by the National Research Council as having a positive impact on student achievement, teacher retention, and professional development. The process can take anywhere from one to three years, and only 3% of teachers nationwide have achieved National Board Certification status. Only 598 of those are from the state of Missouri. The ladies we will be recognizing this evening have been working toward their National Board Certification outside the scope of their classroom duties for the past few years. Brandon Jamison served as their candidate support provider. I am pleased to announce Parkway's new National Board Certified Teachers. This year, we have five. So, Dr. Patrice H., would you come forward first, along with the Board members and Dr. First, I would like to recognize Michelle Dempsey. Michelle is in her 12th year with Parkway and teaches English Language Arts at South High. She is a National Board Certified in English Language Arts, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood. Michelle is a graduate of William Woods and earned her Master's from the University of Missouri, St. Louis. Mr. Kevin Beckner, please come forward to represent Northeast Middle. Ellen teaches ESOL at Northeast Middle, where she also co-teaches English Language Arts classes. She is certified in English as a New Language, Early Adolescence, and Young Adulthood. Ellen received her Bachelor's from Eastern Illinois University and her Master's from Washington University. This is her sixth year in Parkway. Carol also teaches ESOL and co-teaches English Language Arts at Northeast Middle, where she is in her sixth year. Her certification is in English as a New Language, Early Adolescence, and Young Adulthood. Carol graduated from Grinnell College and received her Master's from the School for International Training. Casey earned her National Board Certification in English Language Arts and Early Adolescence. This is her fifth year teaching English Language Arts at Northeast Middle. Casey received both her Bachelor's and Master's Degree from Truman State University. Congratulations, Casey. And now, we'd like to have Mr. Travis Fass come forward to represent Central High. And we'd like to recognize Jenny Prophet. Jenny is a science teacher at Central High, where she is in her 14th year. Her certification is in Science, Chemistry, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood. Jenny earned her Bachelor's Degree from Western Illinois University and her Master's from the University of Missouri, St. Louis. These fine teachers will certainly help serve our district. However, in their journey, they had much support, and I would like to recognize their colleagues, friends, and family members who are with them this evening that supported them on this long journey. Thank you for all of you who supported them. Thank you.
I just want you guys to know how really excited we all are for you. I know how much hard work went into your studies, and I know you work hard enough as teachers every day, so I can't imagine how much it took, how much extra strength it took for you to get through this really rigorous program, and we all really do appreciate your hard work.
Mrs. Feldman?
Uh huh.
I just thought I could just make a couple of comments. We now have 17 National Board Certified Teachers in this district. And because of some really neat advocacy from PNA and NEA, and I'd like to just -- Dora, would you just wave, Dora Wallace from NEA, who is a National Board Certified Teacher, and just, I think, some further efforts by Liz Morrison, who's somewhere here, who's actually really advocating others, including herself, that perhaps pursue the National Board. I think we're going to see more teachers being here in the future, receiving their certification, and we really think this is a wonderful way. As Lisa pointed out, there's wonderful research that suggests people become better at their craft through the experience, and so we really want to encourage other Parkway teachers, professionals, to pursue the hard work, and it's hard work and the rigor, but we think we'll benefit as a district from this.
Thank you. 4.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda, there are none. 5.0 citizen statements. I have a list here, and if you all don't mind, I'm going to deviate from the order just so we can keep two things together. First, I'd like to call in Cindy McMurty. And we try to keep the statements to three minutes. If there are only three of you tonight, it shouldn't -- we don't.
Carl.
Right. First, that's fine. That's fine.
I'd be more than you should expect.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Carl Peterson, and did you see the address?
Address, please.
Yeah, 340 Senate Court, and that's in St. Charles. And I want to thank you, Madam President, and Dr. Marty, and all Board members. And I'd like to, you know, add my congratulations to the five fantastic teachers. I noticed they were all women. Way to go, ladies. So, anyway, I'm a former president of Ferguson-Florissant School Board, and last year, for several years, I've been very, very upset at the level of public education and its outlook here in Missouri. And last year, when we fell to 41st in per pupil spending from 32nd only seven years ago, I sent out an email to a bunch of people, and then, two weeks later, 22 of them came at my house, and we met to talk about what we could do to further public education. And a few of those people are with me today, and I'd like to just recognize them if they would. You know, they put in some time and some effort to support all of you. Last February, I went to a Chamber of Commerce meeting in the Capitol, and they had a bunch of legislators there, and I asked this question. I said, "We are 41st in the nation in per pupil spending. What do you think?" And Steve Tilly, the Speaker of the House, said, "Money isn't the only thing. We have a reform agenda of charter schools, elimination of teacher tenure, and merit pay." I cannot tell you how angry I was over that, because my wife is a teacher, and not one of those things was going to get her any place. We have to stand up against that agenda. There is a higher burden where I live in St. Charles and out here in West County, because most of that agenda comes from our legislators. They're the ones. I don't have to name names. You know who they are. And we need to stand up, and we need to say that we're not going to support that agenda, that we need to care about kids. And I know some people may feel that you don't want to do that because you don't want to get involved in politics. This isn't a Democratic thing. It isn't a Republican thing. It's not a conservative thing. It's not a liberal thing. It's a thing for kids. We just can't see us go anything further down the road. We are going towards $500 million to $700 million below in the foundation formula, so please, I'd like you to stand up. You seven members could stop this agenda here in Parkway. You really could, if you'd just stand up and be heard, and I know you will, and thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. I do have, you know, a hard copy of what I sent you. I've got anybody else that wants a copy of this and want to stand up, there are organizations like Missouri Public School Advocates that you can join or save our schools and start speaking up for public schools. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Before you get started, could you please say your name and your address for the record?
My name is Cindy McMurtry. My address is 2957 West Borough Drive in St. Charles. I have three children in school. My oldest is in college. My middle daughter has special needs. She's deaf, and I have a younger daughter. I care about public education like most parents care about public education. We want our kids to be successful. We want them to have a good future. When you look at the funding model here in Missouri, it's scary. It's sad, and most people don't take the time to do that. For some reason, I had to learn about special ed the hard way, and so I guess part of what I'm saying is, special ed takes a team of people. You all know that. I'm kind of preaching to the choir here. You use special school district and your classroom teachers. It takes occupational therapists, physical therapist, speech-language pathologists, all these things to help our children when they're young and when their mind is growing and when we can make such a big difference. One of the things that really concerns me about this agenda of charter schools is that charter schools don't take special needs kids. They say they do, but if you look at the kind of special needs kids they take, they're the easy ones. They're the low-cost ones, and so it's not right. It's not fair. It's not an option. Vouchers aren't an option for a special needs child. You all have kids in your classrooms every day, and your teachers work so hard with those children. And, I'm sorry, money matters. I've been told no many times in IEP meetings, and I knew the reason was funding. It wasn't because people didn't want to do the right thing. It was they didn't have the money to do the right thing. And so, one of the things I want to say as a parent of public education, as a parent with children in public education, is it matters. It matters every day to those kids. It matters to those teachers. They will become successful taxpaying citizens if we can provide them the skills that they need to go out and be successful. I ask, where's this money for charter schools going to come from? Where's this money for vouchers? Because that's another way to make it look like, oh, we'll let them go to any school they want to, but A, there aren't schools for them to go to, B, they can't meet the needs of the IEP, and there is no money. If there's a pot of money for vouchers and charters, then let's put it into public education. Let's fund the formula, whatever buzzword they want to call it in Missouri. I also believe the federal level has to help, too, but I do think that it's important at all the school boards. We've talked to four, five, six now, so I think it's important for school boards to step back and go, you know, if we do this together, we can make a difference. So, thank you again for letting us come and talk, and good luck.
Thank you. You both will receive a reply in writing. Next, I'd like to call on Councilmember, Chesterfield Councilmember from Ward One, Matt Siegel. He's got something to tell us.
Thank you, Board President Feldman, Vice President Mogulman, and Dr. Marty and the rest of the Board members. First, I just want to, as a representative of Chesterfield, I want to commend Dr. Marty and his hard work over the past couple of years. I guess we're going on a year and a half now. The city, with Dr. Marty's efforts and Mr. Herring at City Hall, the city administrator, are embarking on just an amazing time right now as far as partnerships, and I want to thank the Board on behalf of the Council and for putting our, formalizing, memorializing our community partnership that I think will be a textbook for other communities to jump on board. As Dr. Marty said at a meeting the other day, that Baldwin's already saying, hey, when can we do something like this with you? It's a testament to hard work and, most of all, cooperation. So, with that, I think we have a bright future. And speaking of futures, this week, with the encouragement of current Mayor Geiger, five council members, past mayors, and alike, I've decided to run to be Chesterfield's next mayor. And with that comes a lot of responsibility and a lot of pride, and as a local, homegrown Chesterfield kid, born here in 1978, I'll take a lot of pride in being Parkway's first Chesterfield mayor. So, I think it'll be, we'll embark on some neat times, and I look forward to continuing our open lines of communication and taking our partnership and building a strong community for the next generation of my kids who are a kindergartner at Green Trails. So, I think we have a bright future, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, and you also will receive a reply in writing. Next, 6.0, call for executive session, none. 7.0, approval of agenda for December 12, 2012. May please have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for December 12.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. 8.0 resolutions, there are none. 9.0 communications. Before we start with that, I'd like to say hello to, I see a Boy Scout troop over here. What troop are you guys from?
Troop we did.
And what are you doing here with us tonight?
Well, this is part of our, you know, the, 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 We spent countless hours writing and refining the curriculum and continuing discussions about opportunities for BJC Healthcare and its affiliates to further enhance the program through guest speakers, field trips, and other learning opportunities. In August, we brought all of our students in, along with their parents, to Barnes Jewish West County Hospital, where they learned the details of the program and had the opportunity to ask questions in preparation for the start of the school year. It was an exciting night with representatives from BJC Healthcare, Parkway, and Special School District, all on hand to explain the expectations and opportunities associated with enrollment in academy, and also to express our commitment, our joint commitment to the venture. On August fourteenth, fifteen students arrived at the St. Louis Community College Corporate Center eager for their first day of learning. The academy this year is comprised of fifteen students, fourteen from South High and one from North High. There are currently three male students and twelve female students enrolled in the course. The Pre-Professional Health Sciences class meets from seven forty-five to ten fifteen a.m. every other day. Students provide their own transportation to the class meetings. During the first semester, students attend class at the St. Louis Community College Corporate Center located on McKelvey Road in Bridgeton. And beginning in January, the academy students will actually be attending classes at Barnes Jewish West County Hospital. Throughout the semester, students will also have opportunities for field trips, as well as access to individual shadowing opportunities through BJC Healthcare. We actually have about three students taking an opportunity to shadow on December twenty-seventh during their break, which is pretty exciting. This one-year course was designed to increase interest in healthcare and biomedical careers and prepare students for post-secondary health science studies by introducing kids to the variety of opportunities and benefits of the industry. Beginning in January, students will participate in clinical rotations at the hospital. This will allow students to shadow in sixteen different departments, such as the emergency department, ICU, radiology, pharmacy, dietetics, environmental sciences, and oncology. In this course, students learn about human structure and function, diseases and disorders, healthcare delivery systems, legal implications and responsibilities, as well as the ethical boundaries and safety precautions associated with a career in health and biomedical sciences. In addition, all participants learn essential skills such as taking vital signs, CPR, and first aid certification. As you can see in the picture, students are regularly participating in hands-on, real-world learning experiences that are authentic and will transfer into careers within the health and biomedical industries. As you can see, this program has generated a lot of press, as well as one significant tweet that I would like to share with you. On November first, ASCD, an organization that develops programs, products, and services essential to the way educators learn, teach, and lead, tweeted, "We're reading, are your students ready? See how some schools are preparing students now for the jobs of the future." This tweet went to all thirty-six thousand ASCD followers and included a link to the Scholastic Administrator Magazine that highlighted Parkway's Pre-Professional Health Sciences The implementation of this academy has been similar to navigating a maze. Overall, the implementation of the academy has been seamless. However, we have faced a few challenges thus far. Students have expressed some concern over the location of the classroom. As I stated earlier, the facility is located in Bridgeton, and the majority of our students are coming from South High. One student said, "At first, I liked coming to this location, but after a while, it's kind of a pain. A closer location to South would have been nicer." Another student added, "It uses a lot of gas, which is unfortunate." The second challenge we have faced this year involved scheduling conflicts between the high school. As I stated, we have students from both North and South High School. And as long as the A, B, or red-blue block schedules alternate, we are good to go, with no problems. However, following the Thanksgiving holiday, we had one schedule that didn't alternate, which created a situation where we had students on every day of the week versus the alternating schedule. We are fortunate to have an amazing, committed teacher who has been working independently with this student to ensure that he receives the academy curriculum, and we're also making plans for the future, as we will face this same issue again after spring break. Lastly, the clinical rotation schedule was pushed back to second semester, which didn't align with our initial plans, but we are actually finding that the revised schedule is assisting in a more effective delivery for the curriculum. So I'd like to take just a moment to share some quotes from not only Ms. Smegner, the instructor, but also, as well as some of our students. Ms. Smegner states, "Even though the scope and sequence of the material, the location in the classroom and the clinical components are still works in progress, I feel that these students have learned and will continue to learn a tremendous amount of information that will help them as they move on to the next phase of their lives." Here are some quotable quotes from our students. "It directed me away from a horrid career by bringing in a person from that career to present to us." Another student wrote, "The Pre-Professional Health Sciences Academy is helping me develop an elementary understanding of the medical field. I will have a better idea of what medical profession I would like to go into." The students really seem to enjoy the opportunity to hear from industry professionals about their experiences and their careers. It's really an opportunity for these presenters to not only talk about knowledge, skills, and the industry, but just also about the dispositions and characteristics of successful learners, which is exciting. In addition, the course is providing kids with learning experiences that ultimately will help them to make informed post-secondary decisions regarding their college major. Students are also participating in opportunities outside of the class, such as moulage. On November second, two of our academy students chose to participate in a mass casualty disaster drill held at Barnes Jewish. Moulage is the art of applying artificial but realistic injuries for realistic emergency training purposes. This valuable learning experience allowed students to play the role of the patient, but at the same time, they gained insights into disaster response processes and procedures in a hospital setting. They were really proud of their pictures. I'd like to close by talking about just some of our future plans. As we look into the future, we're really researching answers to the following questions. Is there another classroom location that may be a better fit for our students? How can we avoid scheduling conflicts in the future? To what extent can we expand the academy in the future, knowing that there are limited resources and time and space that BJC has to provide? How could we utilize simulated learning environments to increase the number of students we are able to serve? Could the project lead the way biomedical sciences program provide a sequence of courses interested in health sciences versus just having them wait until their senior year to have access to this type of course? And what would it look like if we replicated this model in other disciplines, such as engineering or information technology? And I will tell you that I had a very promising conversation with a local engineering firm talking about a capstone course for engineering students, kind of looking the same way, which was exciting. So I would like to thank you all, again, for your support of the academy. Your mission-driven support of this initiative is truly making a difference for our students. It's ensuring that they'll be able to understand and respond to the ever-changing world as they graduate from our Parkway High Schools, and I'm thrilled to be a part of it. At this time, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have. Yes?
Jennifer, I just want to congratulate you on this beginning. And my hope is that five years from now, we have dozens of these types of partnerships, just as you mentioned, you know, from this medical to engineering, IT, perhaps growing our own teachers, and various things like that. I think it's a great beginning, and I'm really hopeful that we'll see it expand greatly.
Thank you. Jennifer, I'll mimic that. Congratulations. I think you guys are doing a terrific job. My question has to do with how we got our fifteen students, and how it ended up to be so heavily weighted towards South, and how that worked out.
You know, the students were, the program was sent out kind of to all of the counselors, and it was part of the course proposal process. So as we talk about every year, if there's any changes in career and technical education, I send that information to the counselors. To be honest, I think the reason we had such a big following from South was because I was a chaperone on a field trip with a South High counselor, and I had his ear, and he couldn't get away, and I talked to him about it, and I talked about how great it was. And as a result, he kind of became the resident, you know, advocate in really in identifying those students. And so I do believe that that was probably why it was heavily weighted towards South. But I think even after the June board meeting, that was when the North High student contacted us with a strong desire to become a part of it. So I think, you know, as students are seeing and hearing more about it, that we're going to begin seeing these things across the district. And also, this year, I'll be sending more pictures and specific information, student testimonials, which I think will be helpful in spreading the word across the district.
What can your capacity be for next year? Do you have that mapped out yet?
You know, at this point in time, I had a meeting with BJC today, and they are kind of waiting on interest before they go to their folks to ask for more space. And so we have talked a little bit also with SSD about the possibility of simulation labs maybe located at their tech schools that we could utilize where students may have clinical component, but then also the simulated component in addition to the classroom learning environment, and that may be an approach that allows us to reach more students. But we're kind of waiting to see what the course requests come in at first.
But you definitely think that you're going to repeat?
I anticipate that we will see, especially from South, because those kids are talking. So now it's just a matter of how do we spread the word in the other buildings.
Okay. And do you foresee having something for two thousand and thirteen in some of these other industries?
Two thousand and thirteen, potentially going through course proposal process in September of two thousand and thirteen, it would be implemented in fourteen, fifteen. And that's just, I mean, it's possible.
We're always anxious.
Yeah.
Just what she said, more, faster. So is there any follow-up with these students to see? I mean, are you tracking, like, where they're to gauge their interests?
Yes. We do have, when they came in, we gave them kind of a pre-assessment of just, here are a list of medical careers, and kind of give us an idea of your interests in each of these. And then, obviously, they're gaining important information over time, because the one student who probably said that they were strongly interested in a specific career now believes it is horrid, and so that probably changes. And so they will be doing that again, because as they proceed, in January, February, they'll rotate through sixteen different areas, but then towards the end of the semester, they're going to have the opportunity to actually kind of specialize and do some further research in an area of interest. So we'll definitely see, and then at that time, begin conversations with them about what post-secondary may look like for them.
So what's horrid?
Well, a lot of them are, they're moving forward. They're moving forward in post-secondary.
Which one was horrid?
Oh, you know, I don't know. I don't know. I need to find that out. I think it was pharmacy. I think they were talking about the levels of math in pharmacy. And they said, yeah.
Better to learn that in high school than in grad school.
Well, thank you so much, Jennifer. We look forward to hearing more about your plans in the future.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Feldman, I think the plan would be to hear from these students, hopefully, sometime later in the second semester. So you'll get, it was great for Jennifer, but I think it'll be great to have the students after nearly a year.
Yeah. I look forward to visiting with them when they get to the hospital.
That's right. That'll be a great experience.
Now, twelve point oh two, we're going to talk about Goal Three, or listen to Dr. Chelsea Watson talk to us about confident learners. May I call on Assistant Superintendent Dr. Chelsea Watson?
Good evening, President Feldman, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Calanda. It gives me great pleasure to stand here before you this evening to talk about the work of Goal Three, on behalf of the staff, students, parents, and community members who have already contributed to this work. As you know, Goal Three is about confident learners. All students are confident learners who are increasingly self-directed, skilled, and persistent as learners. So please indulge me for just a few minutes and close your eyes.
You're welcome.
Think about your favorite teacher. Now put yourself in that same space, whether it be the hallway, a classroom, a field, a gym. What comes to mind? Why is this your favorite teacher? You may open your eyes. Now I want you to hold on to this teacher and your thoughts as I talk about how we're going to ensure all students are confident in Parkway. Goal Three, and the work I'm going to share with you this evening, encompasses three measurable objectives, a few of our vision statements, and one of our commitments. The first measurable objective is all students will improve in their confidence, self-direction, and persistence as learners. The second, all students will report they are physically and emotionally safe. And lastly, all students will monitor and make adjustments to achieve their personal goals, including academic, career, health, social, and civic goals. As for the vision statements, we succeed when all of our students, when all of our graduates are acting out of a strong sense of personal, social, and civic responsibility, always seeking to understand the views, values, and cultures of others, and pursuing a personal direction based on the understanding of their talents and interests. And the commitment, we will support the health, well-being, integrity, and character development of students. The Social Emotional Action Team, SEET, is the structure in which Goal Three work is being accomplished. There are four work teams that encompass SEET, and I would like to recognize the facilitators for each team for their outstanding leadership. First, school climate, Michael Barilak and Steve Columbo. And Steve couldn't be here tonight. Michael? Stand up, be recognized. There we go. Social Emotional Learning, Charlotte EJ and John Barrow. Career Pathways is facilitated by Jennifer Stanfield. And I facilitate the Character Education Action Team. The first area of our work I want to recognize this evening is school climate. As you know, the best meteorologist can't control the change in climate, but I want you to know that the people of Parkway most certainly can. We want our students to be physically and emotionally safe. Thus, we must have a positive school climate that fosters development and learning. This is the definition in which the work team used when referring to school climate. It is believed that the most effective and proven means of addressing bullying and other misbehavior, and most importantly, support the development of the desired social-emotional behaviors and outcomes by directly and intentionally improving school climate. Ultimately, school climate is influenced by how well we implement character education, career pathways, and social-emotional learning standards. The work team reviewed these domains among other literature when trying to identify domains for Parkway. Based on the literature review, the work team has recommended revisions tailored to Parkway, and they're highlighted in the next two slides. Over the last five months, with a variety of groups of individuals, Parkway domains and subdomains have been collaboratively developed. We believe more specificity for the domains was needed, particularly since these domains are the foundation for detailed indicators. These indicators will operationalize the domains and subdomains, and will serve as the basis for school climate in the future. The remaining domains are teaching and learning and school environment. You will see on the next two slides, work that has been accomplished and work yet to be done. Work will begin as soon as possible on indicators, so existing measures can be reviewed, and if needed, revised and new ones developed. Parkway policies will also be revised and reviewed, if necessary, so the work of school climate is appropriately defined. The primary goal is to have the school climate survey, which is annually administered to students around spring break, revised to reflect all the necessary indicators. Currently, the measurement of Goal Three, measurable objective two, is one question from our previously given school climate survey, asking if students feel safe at school. Clearly, once the standards are finalized, we must be able to measure them, to identify our strengths and areas to grow. So timelines and protocols for the use of other school climate measures will also be developed as needed. The next work is around social-emotional learning. Although Goal Three, measurable objective one, provides the target for the work of the social-emotional work team, developing these standards and methods to measure will impact all of Goal Three. This particular graphic represents the framework for the draft of the social-emotional learning standards. Competency Area One includes self-awareness and self-management, the skills that we all need to monitor and manage our feelings, thoughts, and actions. Area Two includes social awareness and relationship skills, understanding required to develop and sustain positive relationships. And Area Three includes responsible decision-making, the ability to demonstrate ethical and responsible behaviors in a variety of circumstances. The social-emotional work team was developed to implement three major action steps of our district strategic plan. The first action step, to establish standards for student social-emotional learning, including confidence, self-direction, and persistence as learners, understanding the views, values, and cultures of others, and personal, career, social, and civic responsibility. As described in the previous slide, a framework was researched and adopted to provide structure for this work. With this framework, a With this framework, a solid, research-based social, emotional learning standards and performance indicators were drafted. Draft standards are being shared to gather feedback and will be revised as necessary. Action Step Two, identify and create measures to use for evaluating the following: student's confidence, self-direction, skill, and persistence as learners, and student's ability to monitor and adjust personal goals, including academic, career, social, health, and civic. The social, emotional learning team is also now beginning to research and develop measures to, methods to measure. Measurement will be a two-pronged approach. One, student performance related to the standards, and two, curriculum and instructional practices supporting student's social, emotional learning. Once the measures are identified, data will be collected to establish current baseline, and the plan will be revised as necessary. The third action step, define, develop, and implement a multi-tiered instructional model to address and support students' social, emotional learning needs. As you can see, this action step is down the road. The foundation of standards and solid curriculum and instructional practices enable precise development of additional tiers of support to specifically address the needs of our Parkway students. So to summarize progress so far, the, and social, emotional work team has been established with clear action steps. A mission-aligned framework has been selected. The draft standards are currently being shared to collect feedback, and methods to measure are being researched and developed. Baseline data collection will follow, and a long-term, multi-tiered, social, emotional learning instructional model will be developed and implemented, leading to higher expectations and brighter futures for all Parkway students. During the 2012-2013 school year, the Career Pathways work team is focusing on the design and implementation of a Career Pathways framework to provide structures for setting personal goals and providing direction for relevant course selection. Guidance for this work comes from Goal Three Measurable Objective Three. All students will monitor and make adjustments to achieve their personal goals, including academic, career, health, social, and civic. We know that student advancement in a global society depends on students developing and understanding their own strengths, interests, and goals. Furthermore, post-secondary planning is a result of each student exploring a variety of post-secondary options and career possibilities in accord with his or her goals that reflect these interests, abilities, and aptitudes. Becoming a self-advocate through goal-setting and action-planning is paramount in making decisions related to academics, careers, health, social, and civic responsibility. According to the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Career Pathways assist in the development of a coordinated and non-duplicative sequence of courses that identifies both secondary and post-secondary education elements, includes challenging academic and career technical education, and culminates in one of more, one or more of the following: technical skill proficiency, a credential, or a post-secondary degree. For the 2012-2013 school year, the work team is focusing on the development of a framework that will support a seamless transition for students as they pursue personal, academic, and career goals. Ideally, students will begin with the end in mind, thinking specifically about what type of career they may pursue based on an understanding of their own strengths, talents, and interests. Working backwards, they will determine what type of post-secondary programming may be necessary, as well as the major or area program that's aligned to their career. In the end, students will select coursework during their high school career that allows them to further explore and prepare for the pursuit of the aforementioned career. Students will gain valuable information through engagement in related coursework and will ultimately be able to determine if their stated career goal is attainable and desirable. Throughout the process, students will better understand themselves and their strengths, and how those strengths translate into a career in the future. Additionally, students may determine what they don't like, which we heard a little bit in Jennifer's presentation, and this framework will allow for students to adjust their career goals in response to new learning experiences. Many-time parents and teachers and others ask the question, how can we expect our young students to know what they want to do when they grow up? Students may not have clarity on their desired future occupation. However, students will likely have an idea of the various career pathways that may be worth pursuing based on their abilities, their talents, and their interests. In his bestselling book, The Element, Sir Ken Robinson describes, "At the point at which natural talent meets personal passion as the key to both personal and organizational success." Therefore, it's certainly our hope that each and every Parkway student has the opportunity to uncover his or her passion through rigorous and relevant coursework and through personal experiences to determine which career pathways may support a lifetime of happiness, satisfaction, and success. As students begin developing career goals, it's important to consider what data they may need in order to uncover their passion. Explore and plan career information, extracurricular activities, athletics, grades, and other student achievement data, as well as career and personality interest information from Naviance, Parkway's college and career readiness solution, should all be considered in order to help students attain their career goal. Our work team is currently identifying areas where technology can assist in providing teachers, counselors, students, parents, and administrators with the information they need to support students in the goal-setting process. This year, counselors throughout the district are participating in a series of webinars to learn more about what Naviance and Family Connections has to offer students and families. As a result of this learning, a team of counselors will develop collaboratively a systemic implementation plan for Naviance for students in grades six through twelve. This will guarantee that students will have the appropriate information they need in order to develop relevant career goals in accordance with Goal Three Measurable Objective Three. Additionally, the Career Pathways work team is working on the development of a course guide that will provide information to students and parents about the connections between course offerings and relevant career pathways. In redesigning our current, current, current course guides, students will have the opportunity to see which courses support each of the sixteen career clusters. Character education is the fourth work team of SEET. Character education includes a broad range of concepts, such as a positive school culture, moral education, caring school community, social, emotional learning, positive youth development, civic education, and service learning. All of these approaches promote the intellectual, social, emotional, and ethical development of people, and share a commitment to helping them become responsible, caring, and contributing citizens. Character education helps students to develop human qualities such as justice and diligence, respect, and courage, and most importantly, helps students understand why to live by them. Parkway has an obligation. Good character is not formed automatically. It's developed over time through a sustained process of teaching, example, learning, and practice through character education. The social, ethical, and emotional development is just as important as our students' academic development. After all, we know that good workers, citizens, neighbors, school board members, all have their roots in good character. As Theodore Roosevelt said, "To educate a mind, to educate a man in mind and not in morals is to educate a menace to society." Educators across the globe have been using character education to transform schools, improve culture, increase achievement, restore civility, and to improve job satisfaction and retention among teachers. In England, it's called citizenship development. In the United Kingdom, it's called social, emotional learning. In South Wales, it's called values, ethics, and morals. In Mexico, civics and ethics education. In Hungary, moral development, and I can go on. In summary, a holistic approach to education includes some form of career, of character education. So where are we on this journey? The Character Education Action Team has been following the Stanford-McDonald Leadership Academy protocol in looking at our district through the lens of character education. First, we reviewed our demographics, and then we began to audit our district, identifying assets, gaps, and obstacles that may affect the progress of character education. And this summer, all employees were given the opportunity to respond to an adult culture survey. Clearly, greater understanding and interest must be attracted in order for character education to become a seamless part of our district. Thus, a plan was developed to attract greater enthusiasm from all. The elements of a comprehensive character education plan were also reviewed. The team then determined if the previously described assets were truly assets to our school district. And after this process, we began to dream about what the future of Parkway looks like in regards to character education. It's also important to think of a comprehensive character education initiative as school reform, thus being a long-term process. The team also thought about how to grow deep roots for this work, buffering it against inevitable tides of change. This last portion of the plan is key. The team also developed an assessment plan for each of the assets and dreams. It's essential to identify what aspects of our district promote good character and the methods we will evaluate them if we accomplish what we intend to achieve. As the implementation plan is being drafted, it's essential to obtain input from our Parkway community. A number of groups have already had the opportunity to share character traits that they feel are essential for our students as they walk across that stage as Parkway graduates. There's also a plan to continue to seek feedback. Many of our Parkway schools have already started this journey, and so in order to better understand where all of our schools are, principals have already responded to a brief survey, so we have a clear picture of what's going on in all buildings. Once the components of our plan are finalized, we will then review the eleven principles of effective character education that are published by the National Organization. This document will help us better write short-term and long-term objectives, giving examples of principles and practice. Other tasks on the horizon are, one, continuing to seek stakeholder feedback, seeking feedback on the implementation plan and character traits, develop Parkway beliefs around character education, encourage and provide opportunities for professional development, and developing a process for infusing character education throughout the structures and processes of the entire school district curriculums and culture. Eventually, character education should permeate our entire school district. In conclusion, I wish I could package all of this work up in a nice bow for you, but let the truth be told, this is messy work. Although each work team is working somewhat independently on their topic area at this time, it is clearly recognized that this work is interconnected to and interdependent with all other action team work. Therefore, intentional efforts will continue to be made to ensure the work of all teams is connected and reflects the work of others. This is certainly a priority and an ongoing process. So let me take you back. At the beginning of this report, I asked you to think about your favorite teacher. Can you now name why he or she was your favorite teacher? Did you feel connected? Did you feel engaged, valued, and guided in a direction that impacted your perspective and your understanding of others? Were your social and emotional needs met? Did you have a relationship with this teacher? Were you able to pursue a direction based on an understanding of your own talents and interests? I certainly hope so. With that being said, we have done a diligent job over the past years guaranteeing our curriculum for the benefit of our students. It is now time to guarantee that all students have an educational experience that ensures them opportunities to enhance their confidence in school, which will impact their lives and yours in this ever-changing world. At this time, the facilitators of the work team and I would be happy to answer any of your questions.
That was great, Chelsea. Thank you.
One of the things I think about, you know, we know that character really is doing what's right, and of course, our kids, our schools are really microcosms of the larger world we live in. How do you involve conflict resolution for kids? Because they're going to face it in many different ways, and if they can learn some of those skills at school, then is that included in this?
Absolutely. It is all part of helping students understand how to, how we're going to guide them in developing their character. It's also a part, if you think about the standards, the draft that you have there, the standards of school climate. So absolutely, we've been having some conversations a little bit about conscious discipline and others, so absolutely. And, and with the social, emotional standards, being intentional in teaching students appropriate responses, appropriate actions will be key. And when I say intentional, we have left it to by chance, if you will, because it hasn't been part of our guarantee for all kids. So moving forward down the road, but hopefully sooner than later, being intentional, we will certainly be able to address that.
I have a question about career pathways. Jennifer, you might want to come down. I always love when the work we do on the school board actually translates to things that I see in the lives of kids, and it just so happened that a conversation with my sophomore daughter tonight coming home from school was her changing her mind about an area she wanted to focus on. She took a class this year that she thought might be a potential career pathway for her, and she said, you know what, Mom? I, I don't want to pursue it anymore. I don't really think it's for me. Instead, I'd like to pursue, and then she, she mentioned another, another content area. And, you know, she's come to this all on her own. My question is, is how do we help kids who aren't coming to these conclusions on their own clarify their interests so that their course selection, like I said, my daughter's a sophomore, so course selection as a junior and a senior is so important. How are we helping them?
Well, I think in a lot of cases, it's helping the students to analyze the information that they get from the tools that we have. So just sending kids out into Naviance to take a career clusters inventory and helping them to internalize those results on their own might not work. So we do have to be, you know, very diligent in having those conversations, and a lot of that's already being done through the counseling curriculum. But all of our teachers, as they're working with students, especially in classes that are connected, in all of our classes, the teachers are working hard to show transfer to the real world. And so, you know, I think it's just also helping our teachers to understand that it may just be going that next step to talk to kids about, you know, what were you really good at? What did you struggle with? Did this come naturally to you? Because what we find sometimes, especially with our really high-achieving students, is that they're really good at everything. So they really don't know what they're naturally good at or what they're passionate about. Uh, and so I think it's just being very, um, you know, diligent in having those conversations.
And do we have some kind of systemic approach to having those conversations? Who's the designated adult? Is it a teacher, a particular teacher? Is it a, you know, we don't have advisors for our kids like they have in college, so...
Who is it?
Who is it, and when is the time?
At this point in time, it's, it's the counselors. However, as we are kind of laying out the process for career pathways, and as we're thinking about this Career Pathways framework that we're developing, the, the communications plan and the who needs to be involved, it keeps kind of bubbling up. So we're having those conversations at this point in time, but it's all in development. But it's going to be key, you're right, in terms of how do we then have the conversations with the people that need to have the conversations and provide development? Because some people are not necessarily, we're not... Because some people are not necessarily, we're not necessarily used to that. We're used to talking to kids about content, not necessarily a student's personal interest.
And I think when they're in high school and the teachers are so specialized in their particular content, it might be more difficult for them to see, have a broader perspective on, you know, helping a student look at a different path. You know, the science teacher might not think, you know, this might be a better path for the student, you know, when it's outside of their content area.
And we're looking at models throughout our state and other states, and we've reached out to a couple of different districts because we're really studying the most effective process. Because we can have a lot of tools, but they're just tools. And so we need to also know which process we're going to utilize, and how do we make sure that all the stakeholders are well-informed and that we can really, truly implement with fidelity a Career Pathways framework? And so that communication piece and that process development is going to be really key.
And Dr. Marty and I have talked before about timelines. Whenever you think that it's the right time to start having these discussions with students, I would tell you to go back two or three or four years before that. I mean, they really need to start thinking about what they like.
Right.
And early, because those early decisions of what they want to take in middle school and then how they end up in high school are so important. If they make the wrong choice in middle school, it's tough to catch up. You know, I mean, I can, I can give you an example of a foreign language. If you choose the wrong foreign language, you know, then you have to start over in high school. And what a waste that was. And how, you know, how are we guiding the kids?
Right, right. And right now, the Naviance, the plan for beginning some of those inventories would be in sixth grade and future pathways, so really trying to, to solidify that curriculum.
And that's new, isn't it?
It, we're in our third year.
Of?
Future pathways. Mm-hmm, the sixth grade future pathways curriculum.
No, 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 but I mean, um, Naviance for middle school. Um, Charlotte, you might be late.
It's not new, but most of the middle school counselors do not use it as effectively as high school.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I didn't really think I'd heard of it until high school.
She didn't use the term "for" though, right?
No. No, she just, no, she just was, you know, she just was questioning, you know? Took an entry level, and I don't know if I want to go on to the next level.
Right.
So, I mean, this is what high school's about, is you get to try different things. I mean, that's, Charlotte, right? Too loudy.
Yeah, I would have driven y'all crazy because I didn't have a clue.
Neither. Even in college.
Even in college.
Well, barely.
Even today.
Pretty much as an adult. So the Naviance, you talked about, like, a kid says they want to be whatever, and they'll guide the curriculum selection towards that career path, and I'm assuming that this works kind of the other way. They like X, Y, Z, and that points to, you know, I want to be a chemist or a doctor.
Right, so the way that a lot of these inventories work is that it, you know, it gives you an option of, I'd rather do this or this. And so in the end, it's kind of based on those interests and talents and abilities, it will generate careers that are, um, you know, that may be of interest to you to then go and further explore. And so what we are hoping to do is help students to then take that a step further and see the courses that are kind of connected to that as well, so that they can see the connection. And that's going to be, I mean, that's when process is going to be really important because we're going to really need to involve all teachers of all core content areas to really be thinking about, uh, you know, what skills and knowledge from their classes and what enduring understandings transfer into which career pathways, so.
Is Naviance something, an exercise we could try? Or is, is that something we could do on our own?
We could, there's guest accounts, and so we could probably...
We have a guest account.
See how wrong we've all been all these years.
I'm still trying to figure it out, so maybe...
We may be able to help advise you.
But it might be interesting to see what the kids are doing, and, you know, because I know when my kids were in Parkway, that was not offered, so it would be an interesting thing for me to see.
I did go through some of the Naviance aptitude things to see what I should have been, and I should have been a bricklayer. But I like to build foundations.
It's the house, you know, there's a connection, right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
When I took that in high school, I was going to be a garbage collector. I don't know how I got into education.
We're glad you did.
All right. Thank you very much, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Let's see, thirteen point oh work session, none. Fourteen point oh policy review, none tonight. Fifteen point oh call for a special meeting, none at this time. Sixteen point oh, call for executive session, December twelfth, two thousand and twelve. May I have a motion in a, no. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I knew today was December twelfth, January ninth, two thousand and thirteen. May I have a motion in a second at the Board of Education, call for an executive session, including any record or vote on Wednesday, January ninth, two thousand and thirteen, at six thirty PM and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School, for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district in any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, six ten point zero two one point one. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employees discussed or recorded, six ten point zero two one point three. Three, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, six ten point zero two one point one three.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, roll call. Sorry.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulgarmann?
Yes.
Dr. Seutino?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Seventeen point zero, recess. Eighteen point zero, we do not need to, uh, go back into closed session. And nineteen point zero, may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. McCarter is no longer on the board. I guess we're all in agreement, seven zero. Thank you, everybody.